Well, you're not in there.
Not in here.
Say testing.
You know, like that.
Test, test, pass.
We have to slide down a little bit.
Okay, so it's coming. I don't think we started the recording.
You would have to slide down a little bit, um, Dale.
Dale, slide down a bit.
Slide down a bit. Take your smelling tip with you soon.
You're in the camera angle.
War zone.
Thank you very much. White House, important news. Order and the first on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under our own. In this world, with the great taking justice for all. First, uh, on the agenda. Vote on, um, Susan is not here.
Yes.
It's an absentee.
Come on, babe.
Um.
Baba. Hey. Let's go.
Yeah.
Bye.
Thank you. Bye bye. See ya. Um. Yes, the draft, uh, the first review approved the minutes of the last meeting, which was July 10th. And you all have copies of this. I put it over. We put it over. Got it. Good. Are there any directions? Questions? Seeing on, entertain emotion, emotion or accept the, no, minutes of the meeting. We need a second. I'll second you. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes of July 10th as written in discussion. All's in favor. Yes, and Buddy's not voting today. He's abstaining because he wasn't present.
Okay.
All right. Next. See the agenda. Our primary function tonight is to review the finding the facts on the, um, airport, Phase Two, which was presented to us, uh, two months ago and then officially last month. And, um, it is very similar to the one that was heard and challenged in court, except they took the, um, hangers out. So we're really talking about the trailway or the, um, taxi lane. That used the word taxi lane. Yep. And so we have gone through, the planning board has gone through a finding the facts and conditions of law. And we have sent it off to, uh, the town attorney who has put them in much better, uh, legal ease than we could ever do. And our job is to go through these one by one and approve or disapprove of each and every one. And then approve or disapprove of the, uh, whole, the finding the facts and the conditions of law in total, as in whole. Last time, uh, we had, uh, a presentation and we did the findings of fact and I read them, each one. Uh, I asked the attorney about doing that and he said, don't waste your time or breath doing that. Hand them out. So I've given, I think, everybody who's wanted copies of them, um, the finding the facts so you can review them. Once we start this deliberation, uh, the audience, citizens present are welcome to listen, but they're not, uh, encouraged in any way to interrupt the proceedings. We could have an open time period for public discussion before we go into that or we can wait until after.
Yeah, I, I just have a question about protocol. But I, and I understand a way if, you know, part of the, you know, uh, ZBA process, which, um, I'm certain is going to wind up there is you have to speak to it and speak to the issues. And I'm going to tell you, having this findings of fact, it was, you know, even though I know you voted five to nothing, there was still issues to discuss. So are we going to be able to make some comments or do we just, we clearly have finding the facts that are passed?
The comment period for the public was last month.
Okay, so I made my comments. I complied with that.
You did comply with that.
Right.
Yes.
So I'm good.
There, you're in the findings of fact.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, we've written, uh, it was extensively done. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
You're very welcome. Is there anybody that feels that they would like to, does something off their chest or speak first? Or shall we move right to the findings of facts? Good. Yes, yeah.
May I have a second question?
Can you please?
Yeah, if I, I didn't know how it was following, but a second question, I guess. Should we name the topic or can I ask?
Yes. I can't hear you.
Thank you. Lawrence Forsbell, 123 North Shore. I have a question on the project. I'm not sure if I should ask it anymore or if I ask this bigger of the application for the permit or have that?
The questions were asked last month.
Okay.
Okay, now we've taken the one month to do the findings of fact and the conditions of law, conclusions of law. I'm sorry. We're going to review those tonight for your benefit, for the benefit of the applicants.
So, so there's not a time to ask a question?
We can have an open discussion, but it's almost fruitless once it's done whether we approve it or don't approve it. They have to make in comments. That's why we, we specifically wanted to have the comments made last month so we could include them in the findings of fact.
Okay. Well, I'll just put it out there maybe as an objection. An observation now of it. So I'm just curious about the purpose of creating a taxi lane. If there will be no hangers there, really what the, what the objective would be considered.
Okay, that's not the purview of the planning board to decide what they're going to do with it. They've applied for an application, by application, to do something. We're going to decide whether they should or should not be allowed to do it.
Understood. It's just something I feel that maybe be considered in the bigger picture of what an ultimate objective might be in the future. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to, the planning board is now going to go through the findings of fact. And we're using the, uh, findings of fact with a little owl on the top. That's the latest version. There's one with red lettering in it. It's not the correct one. That was a draft. Okay, so the planning board is then asked to, uh, consider an application by the airport and, uh, for the development and actually for the finalization of Phase Two, which is, I think you said sixty, seventy, eighty percent done right now. But because of the legal issues, it got stopped. And, uh, now it's back on the table without the, um, hangers involved. So, um, we're going to go through them and I'll go through the numbers and if the board would read along with the numbers as we go. We don't need to take, uh, we need to take a vote. We don't need to, uh, make a motion and a second and everything else in order to, to do this. What we can do is if there's any negative, um, vote on it, speak up. Uh, if it's, we're silent on it, then we're accepting it. We have to say yes to each and every one of them, uh, to go through this process. Okay? Findings of fact, number one. Owned by the county. Any questions? Number two. Property is located in Ashcoon. Three.
Two, one, twenty, individual, no, or?
Yeah, we, we should. We can. Okay, let's make a, um, a voice sound. Say yes.
On one, even two?
Yes.
That's what I thought you told me.
Okay, on one. Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, on two.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. On three.
Yes.
Yes. Under four.
Yes.
Z O means zoning ordinance. You should know that. Okay. Number five.
Yes.
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 Okay. Number six.
Yes.
State, state mandate.
Yes.
Number seven.
Yes.
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 Yes. Number eight.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Number nine.
Yes, that's bad.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Number ten.
Yes.
Number eleven.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Number twelve.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Number thirteen.
Yes.
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 Number fourteen. Take your time on this one.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Number fifteen.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Number sixteen.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. This is statement.
Yep. Number seventeen.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Number eighteen. Okay. Yes, we did it.
Yes.
Number nineteen. Yes. Yes. Number twenty.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And number twenty-one.
Yes.
Okay, we, yes, we've approved all twenty-one findings of fact. Is that correct? Does anybody agrees to that? Okay, the conclusions of law. And this is where interpretation has to take place. And, uh, we have to look at it, uh, from a legal standpoint and how it was affecting, uh, our ordinances and stuff. So again, do we have jurisdiction? Number one.
Yes.
Yes.
Number two, does the applicant have standing?
Yes.
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 Okay, in the zoning ordinance itself, number three, the classification.
Yes.
It is, okay. Number four, the purpose, proposed use.
I do have a question on that.
Okay. Yeah.
I had a discussion with Matt today. And it clearly states in our ordinance that a runway is a structure. That is not how a defined a structure, I think at some point down the road we need to address that.
Any ordinance or?
Your ordinance says a runway is a structure. It's not the definition.
But this isn't a runway.
No, not the taxi.
Is your driveway a structure?
Not according to definition in law, land law.
Any other comments? How do you want to deal with number four? Yes.
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 Yes. And number five, dimensional standards. Yes, on five. Yes, on five.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
On six, on, this is the shoreline zoning ordinance section. Take your time on this one, please. Yes.
Wetlands are not needed.
Yes.
I'm going to say yes. For two reasons, because it's not located, the taxi lane is located within two hundred and fifty feet.
Statement of the law.
Oh, I'm sorry. The taxi lane is not located within two hundred and fifty feet of the listed, um, resource. Primarily, just a lot on that, we can say yes. And secondarily, um, the, uh, I mean, the second item, which it, the, that, um, the wetlands area isn't a freshwater wetland.
Ninety.
Okay.
So I go yes.
Yes.
Yes, or yes of the seven.
Okay. Number seven, applicability. This is the site plan review that we did.
Yes, on seven. Yes. Mr. Sane, if you did the review.
Okay, number eight, was efficient of landscape.
Yes.
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 Number nine, erosion control.
Yes.
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 Number ten, vehicular access.
Yes, we saw that.
Yes.
Yes.
Traffic flow, number eleven, traffic flow. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Number twelve, noise.
If I may ask the answers for the teams. Question pertaining to the noise level. My, your microphone. Hello? A few questions I have are pertaining to noise level. I'm just curious what standards are used for the noise level for the airport. Is it FAA? Standard? I'll give it a whirl.
Okay.
Greg Cohen, Stantec. Typically during the master planning process, uh, which is updated every five to 10 years for most airports, a noise analysis is done and it's done based on, um, a day night decibel average. And they do modeling based on, um, the types of aircraft that are most frequently using the airport. And the, um, DNL is referred to sixty-five, the DNL of sixty-five. And above is where you want to, is where they start considering mitigation. So where the, when the decimal, that's the critical contour that they pay attention to. And it's based, the study is based on a configuration of the runways where most of the operations take place. So they project contours based on the known type of aircraft and the noise they admit. And they go up to certain levels, you know, the, just to, so if those contours extend into, uh, areas where they're, you know, non-aviation uses, then they'll typically start considering mitigation for two of others.
And do we have, have access or we informed that the decimals are over and what are the consequences?
I would, they're, they're in the master plan update, I would imagine.
Do they come to the town? Is there a system so that we receive that information?
Uh, I, I think it would become a topic of discussion should the contours extend beyond or extend into areas where they become a nuisance to others or the non-aviation uses. So, other than being presented in the master plan, I don't think there would be a specific presentation to the town other than the public availability of the data.
We have access to the master plan?
Sure.
Okay.
But there's not a continuous monitoring.
Right.
It's a study done during the master plan process. That's just a decimal. They have something that continues.
You're up.
I have another question. You said, I think, the average. What about, you know, one, two, ten shots that are just really intensive, you know, to those conferences as it goes out? Is that tested?
Well, again, I'll try my best. It's not my area of expertise, but it's my understanding that when they do the average, they build in, um, they, they wait specific times of the year when the use is heaviest and it gets weighted more heavily. So in the summertime, the noise is weighted more heavily than in the wintertime. But I don't know if they're, you know, and as Jeremy indicated, it's a modeling system. So there's no one really, you know, uh, there's no equipment set up that's monitoring the noise at the airfield. They just know based on, uh, traditional use, numbers of operations, when they're at their peak. Like there are peak summer days, there are peak summer months. And those all get weighted a little bit differently than say less busy times during the year at the airport. That's helpful.
Thank you very much. Well, I think on, uh, noise ordinance, it's based on decimal by time. In other words, like in, on OSHA regulations, if you're listening to eighty or ninety or a hundred decimals, you're not allowed to do that eight hour period. You know, where a plane taken off is thirty seconds. You know, so when you try to average that out, you know, that's not, you know, between nothing and, I'm not even sure what the total decimal. Anybody know what the total decimal was?
Was it sixty-five?
Normal jet taken off or actually?
It's probably higher than sixty-five is like the range where sixty-five decibel is where it's perceived as a nuisance noise to areas beyond the aircraft operating area, most likely residential, commercial areas, not affiliated with the airport. But it's usually on airport, that sixty-five.
Is that same thing like a lawnmower?
That's everyone.
Is that, they have to keep the decimals like a lawnmower because that's a sustained period. When they manufacture them, they can call for, you know, sixty-five and under or something for, you know, OSHA requirements for, because they can be run all day. A plane is not going to be.
So I believe this was a packet that was passed out.
Would you come up and say?
Yeah. Amy Gray was Stantec Consulting, representing the Knox County Regional Airport. So the county's lawyer had put a packet together for, um, the last meeting and I believe Jeremy had added some handouts. There is a noise contour map from the last master plan that was included. And it, it shows the contours that, um, Greg was talking about at different levels. Pass it around.
Oh, listen, our package of stuff we reviewed. Yes, okay, thank you.
I'm seeing that.
Okay. Back to twelve, so what is your choice?
Yes. I say yes.
Yes.
Thirteen, dust, fumes, vapor, gases.
Yes. I say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Number fourteen, odor.
Yes.
Number.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Number fifteen, restoring water runoff, surface water drainage.
Yes.
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 Number sixteen, water quality.
Yes.
Yes. Number seventeen, water supply.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Number eighteen, setbacks and screening.
So yes.
Yes.
Although I have a question about that because, um, you guys indicated that you would be landscaping. So if that's part of this taxi lane project or not?
It's, we've moved over the, so.
Solar project? So it is going to be completed by the Phase Two Taxi Lane Contractor. It, it was first, the plan was first submitted to the planning board with the Phase One, um, supplemental information. So I think technology is part of Phase One, um, but it's going to shield all of the future projects in that area. Okay. Thank you.
Back to eighteen, setbacks and screening.
Yes.
Yes.
Number nineteen, explosive materials.
Yes.
Yes. Number twenty, relationship of proposed buildings to the environment. In Arizona.
Yes.
Number twenty-one, refuse disposal.
Yes.
Yes.
Number twenty-two, existing utilities.
Yes.
Yes.
Number twenty-three, special features of development.
Yes.
Yes.
Number twenty-four, exterior lighting.
Yes.
Yes.
Number twenty-five, emergency vehicle access.
Yes.
Yes.
Number twenty-six, municipal services.
Yes.
Yes. And number twenty-seven, air quality.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So you have approved all of the condition, findings of fact and all the conditions of law. This is the way that a planning board should handle all of its permits with some variation depending on the complexity. But we intend to do this, uh, on every application that we get in the future so that we can be consistent, uh, and accurate, uh, and keep ourselves out of court. So the decision based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law while set planning board was voted. And then what is your vote for the overall plan? Accepted? Accepted?
Accepted.
Accepted, accepted. So it's unanimous, uh, from say five to zero. Approves the site plan review and permitting application dated May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, submitted by the Knox County Commissioners, um, without conditions. The board authorizes the chair and or board secretary to distribute these findings and conclusions, which we've done already. The above decision was adopted by the Town Planning Board on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as indicated by the signatures of board members and present and voting. And we're going to make a little change in here. Buddy was not able to be here for the first part of the hearing two months ago, last month and in July. And so he can't vote on this decision, but Susan. months ago, last month, and in July. And so he can't vote on this decision, but Susan, who's our alternate, is here to vote. So we're going to just take Buddy's name out and put yours in there, have you do that, okay? So we have voted five to zero to approve your application. And from what I understand, we can sign it tonight, and you can be on your way.
Thank you.
Send it down that way. Just, just write, print your name underneath it.
I'm excited. Thank you.
Do you have anything for me, just others, anything else for us to sign now?
Uh, no. I just get that one.
Do you want one copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. There it is for you. Now, again, it may seem a little fruitless, but if somebody wants to make any comments, what I would be very interested in is your comments about the way in which we're handling applications, which is we're using state law and main municipal association guidance to do this so that everybody gets treated fairly.
Name a question?
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, Amy Gray, Stantec Consulting. So, you know, on a simple project, when someone submits an application, and normally, you know, it would take one meeting to get the application approved, are you going to take the application, hear it, take a month until the next meeting, write up the finding of facts? Is that going to be the typical?
Yes.
So you would expect, you know, to submit the application and probably a couple of meetings until you actually get the permit, just?
Yes. We are going to strive to respond positively or negatively within sixty days. And in your case, it was, included the subdivision that the.
Site plan.
Say it again?
Site plan.
Change the site.
Change.
No, no, no. We did the shoreline zoning, the zoning ordinance and the.
Flood plan.
No, not flood plan.
I have a couple of plans.
At any rate, we should do those in sixty days. If you come in with a small request, and we don't have to do anything more than the zoning ordinance, we still probably will take thirty days. We hear the case, we find, do the findings of facts, and we'll present them at the next meeting.
Understood. Just curious.
Thank you. And we'd want to try and do that as consistently as we can. So if somebody comes in for a new deck, we're going to have to do finding of fact? That goes to Matt, probably. Yeah, a lot of those things like that wouldn't. This would be major subdivisions, commercial operations, the things that they want the whole planning board to be involved in. I just, you know, I hate to have to, you know, make it the homeowner wants to do a project, you gotta wait two months. Right. Or they lost the season. Yeah. We would prefer not to do that for a deck, but Matt will take care of those. All right?
Yeah.
And I declare this portion of the planning board to be complete and done, and thank you. We do have a little time, and we've been working as planning board on the bylaws for the planning.
Is there, are we doing new business though, before we do that?
Okay.
So I have a question for Matt that maybe not pained to the airport.
Okay. Then, yes, is there any new business?
It's just a question that I have, Matt.
Yep.
I wanted to find out if there's an inspection requirement for the events that are, an annual inspection requirement. I'd heard some problems about that.
No, no worries, no. Of course, I've heard of that.
All right.
They went through a site review for that?
No, no, I know that.
Okay. Was it in the findings of fact?
I don't recall. I think this was a while ago.
No, there was never a set?
No.
Thing where you had, every year you had to put in a.
I don't have anything in the town where on an annual inspection.
And now, it falls back on home rule, and home rule says, if we're not regulating it, they can do what they want to.
Fire marshal's office, very well, they have an annual inspection or something like that, nothing to do with that. No.
We did do an inspection once this was completed, right? Or, yeah.
They don't just figure it out because you know, that's, uh, final requirement inspection I did.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other new business? Then I would like to take some time to do a little bit more work on our bylaws. Do you want to join the speaking now? I'm going to adjourn from the hearing of the site plan review.
Okay.
That's the way to do it.
Yeah.
I need you to sign. Very much. Good evening, just yours.
Yeah.
All right, thanks so much.
We can do a five.
Oh, probably should, yeah. Do a five, bud? Do a five? Yeah, we don't need to do the.
Do I need to sign this?
Yeah, applicant.